Good evening, this meeting of the City of Kingston's only Board of Appeals will now come to order. It is 6:05. My name is Brian Cafferty, I'll be chairing these proceedings. I will take a moment to explain how the Zoni Board of Appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two al venants. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the City of Kingston. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. I need to talk to the mayor about that unpaid part, it's really. Okay, the other board members are.
Anthony, come on.
Mary Ann, it's Alan.
And Donna, Donna Martin.
She's muted, I can't.
She's, oh, she's muted.
I am muted, I'm here, Donna Martin.
Hi Donna. There will be a period of public comment this evening after each request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members and not other speakers or audience members. Professional demeanor is expected. And with that, I would like to ask for a motion to approve last month's minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
All those in favor? Alright, first up. And it would be a Silkus Holdings LLC to Jensen Avenue. You want to come up, have seat, sure here and just briefly explain to the board members what in a second you're proposing to do and why you need a variance. And just question, just asking, I know probably Donna you didn't, but did anybody actually go down there to see this? You did.
I, I don't remember.
It's very, it's very help, it was very helpful, I was down there and so Anthony you were there too.
Yeah.
Very helpful to see that layout. It makes it a whole lot easier to understand what's going on. And with that, you go ahead.
Sure. My name is Tate Simpson, representing Silkus Holdings. We are, have applied to the planning board for a site plan and approval of our expansion of the Kingston Standard Brewing Company coming to Jensen Avenue. At the request of the board. We submitted an application for variances with respect to setback of two separate buildings on the lot that we would like to renovate and expand in order to accommodate a larger production facility and an expanded tasting room slash restaurant on site.
Okay. So this, everybody's familiar with this property, it's the Village Grocery, grocer. And they have Kingston Standard. They brew beer and have nice, really good pop circles. Anyhow, there's a small addition off of the back of that building where they're currently brewing the beer and and doing food service. And then there's the old market, which all of this is an existing non-conforming use. Like all of the buildings on the property are at the outer limits of the of the setbacks that would be required under current code. So they're, they are what are known as existing conforming, existing non-conforming uses. So there, I want you to tell us a little bit about that, the one confusion. And I wanted Matt for you to sort of chime in on this. Because there, there seems to be a contradictory piece of of information in the code that if you read it without without reading anything else, it looks as though they wouldn't necessarily need a variance, that they could go ahead and make changes. I don't necessarily agree with that, with that running in the code. But but I thought it was worth looking at.
Yeah, I can elaborate, but ultimately, the person who interprets codes is the zoning enforcement officer, whatever their determination is that this variance needed, that determination.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, I'm aware of that. But I also, I also want to get your opinion on it, also want to get Eric's opinion on it. Because at some point, Eric, you looked at this and decided that it didn't need a variance. Did you? You're tired, aren't you? You did, you did see this piece of the code, which I have. That.
What section Eric, did you?
I'm gonna tell you in a minute. You've got your letter from your.
Well, it's 405 attached to the lock-in, lock-in bolt requirement, which identify a 10-foot setback. But then, then the question I had is, the confusing bit was 405 dash 47C, which I don't have the, well, you're watching.
Any building other than a sign that uses wood that can form?
Yeah, yeah, that was the one that made, that raised the question, so.
Yeah, okay. So this was the great, it's the first, first page, section C. Very, very confusing. Looking at that, you wouldn't think that he would need a variance, but I think that he's still really, given the, given the fact that.
He's not looking for change of use, he's looking for an area variance, so this doesn't apply. It's non-conforming use, not, non-conforming existence, it's use of buildings, this only applies to uses.
Oh, are you talking about 47C?
I'm talking about all 405, 47A.
Oh, yeah, C is the one that says.
No, you said A3.
No, no, 47C. That, that one's so personal.
I, that's the person I read.
We, we can read, use it, we can read it. Then you can dismiss us. Anyhow, I still think that, and so does Eric apparently, still think that he needs a variance, but this is just unbelievably contradictory, so, which is not surprising, given some of the issues with this code.
What's your other one?
Yeah. I hear people, I hear there's some people being on that and and as far as I know, anything goes on in the new code, we won't even need a planning board. Pretty much you can do anything you want right there.
Anything that's great, sure.
And Cindy Code is extremely permissive, so permissive that we might not even need a.
I'm more specific than this.
Okay. Alright. Where did, where did they go?
Eric, ask Matt to step out. Chat.
Alright. Hi Donna.
Hi.
How you doing Donna?
I'm hanging in there.
Good, very good, you look good.
I am a little tired today, another MRI.
Takes a toll here.
I know, we, we have our second opinion up in Buffalo, no, sorry, Boston, coming up.
Good, very good.
Yeah, with some liver tumor specialists, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
Are you seeing somebody around here?
Yeah, up at Dyson Cancer.
In this book, this book, this book before, this Tony's whole book. Didn't say how, how it goes. That would be for my time.
For mine, too.
Yeah. And based on the Google thing, so I feel like maybe I went to court once.
Yeah.
So that's.
I missed, I missed the meetings.
It's so calm, you know?
You get three minutes every time to say whatever you want.
What is the, what is the mission to do? So the board, it's a board. It basically wants to look right now. Don't ever sort of appeals to think. To the territory. It's warranted. Something's more, grace. Whatever reason, so like.
Yeah.
You're probably talking here from that. I get that argument. It's me. A lot of times you have to say the bandages. Because it's how many years we've worked on this.
I mean, transfix it piecemeal?
No, since we started this new process in the fall, we've.
2018.
Something you had to answer.
Yeah. Probably standard, maybe.
Now, I, it's not much, yes, we had to wire, that's meant to step out and find out what's going on. So this is not.
This is not the wrong.
I mean, at the risk of having you say this twice, tell me about the I suppose that's initially, that she has to choose the existing cap room. Because the first I only saw was going next to the village.
Yeah, so there is between the north and, and south of the. So there's about 10 or 12 feet to a retaining wall along the property line. And we're proposing to put an addition in the back corner there. It would go right up to about a retaining wall in order to accommodate additional restrooms, maybe exterior, walking cooler, maybe a laundry kitchen. The. That is contingent upon rebuilding that retaining wall, because it's a disrepair.
And that, that retaining wall is on your property or the neighbor's?
It's on the neighbor's property.
So. Yeah, and it kind of looks like it saddles it.
It's like on there. Yeah, and mostly on there, it crosses over, but probably because it's in the in the process, like the long process. Yeah, and it was a, especially in this north corner foundation of a house that was just across the. So that is a conversation that we immediately, it's a neighbor property. How we can potentially share the cost of this.
Yeah.
Certainly we couldn't do this addition if we could. Wouldn't get her permission to rebuild.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, you could, if I just build a wall on the property line, you know.
It's a little terrible.
There should be a plan.
Yeah, and if that, if that corner, it's quite tall.
Basically, yeah, you know, I mean, I know that elevation feels up.
It does.
Back, back corner, I didn't actually.
It probably goes through, if, I don't know what exactly, but this is really good at this survey. So this, at this edge, it's 3 feet tall, at this corner, it's like 8 feet.
Yeah.
Do you have any pictures?
Yeah, I think it's something at least.
I didn't get any pictures.
I didn't get any photographs.
So this is.
Okay.
Those email, Eric.
I don't, this was part of our planning board application, but I.
So this is, this is a wall?
That's the same.
That's a, that's a, yeah. And where does your problem, how did one goes right up to that?
Right on, it's the.
And the addition would go?
Would go, so in this picture, so this, this little addition right here would go in this area.
Oh, right in here?
Yeah. And then the other two pictures, this, this might be helpful. So this is key three, taken right there, looking at this.
So that's your six.
And then one and two were taken here, this is Jensen Avenue, looking at what was the old Sunshine Market building and this loan that they have is.
So you should take over some general, or is that still?
There you have been in operation for a number of years. Yeah, like, just kind of disappeared one day.
It's like, it's, it's gone after all the time, it's like, I, what I, I thought they were still there.
It's got 10 years ago. No, not that long.
Yeah.
We, we bought the property in 2016, and they were still in operation then, and I think.
16 is seven years out, right?
Yeah, yeah, but they operated for a couple of years after that, and then one day disappeared, closed doors. Left. No.
I mean, so when did you, um, how many years?
This was maybe two, almost two years ago. Hasn't been quite that long, I think it's like, maybe two years, thanks. Maybe it's just over two more. Not, not before, no, because we only opened in 2019. So and then, and then the, the spring of 2020 is the onset of that first year of COVID, they had not yet moved in at that point. There's a picture of someone like that thereafter, a picture of all of us standing in front of the building when they silently, all wearing masks outside. So at some point after the spring of 2020.
So how much is, because it doesn't look like a lot.
It's about 10 feet.
Is he even getting up to the property line, which is right, is he getting that instant true from like?
Well, that's why we need to rebuild the retaining wall first. Oh, it would be contingent upon doing that, because yes, the wall is coming down. But it needs, in order not to damage this, the existing building, let alone. In contention to shine.
Okay. I'm reading from the second picture. She been out there much, inside here? I haven't seen her. No, yeah.
See, do you have a second?
Sure. Is she, is she?
Well, it's too early for your license. I mean, I wish I was getting what I need, but they're not giving us. Tuesday's my last final.
Alright.
If I survive. It's questionable.
So then, are you going to go out?
Oh, no, no, for the first year. I still have two years to go. Yeah, so I, I just started the process. But the first year, everybody says is your hardest year.
You did it long?
I did really well the first semester, second semester, also, it's a lot harder and council picked out and the farm isn't really so big, kind of stole my attention.
How long is this?
A few. Not around here.
I was wanting to stop and stop.
Well, more about the lack of time, but yeah, I'm still working at last point.
Oh, still teaching. Oh, okay, you're, you're, you're also teaching or no?
Not really teaching.
Students, not there, but here.
Oh, yeah, here, yeah.
Didn't really go back.
I thought it's not true, I want to farm nearly as much when I lost students. It's pure fun to go out for a drink, if lonely, if anybody, let's take out, for a drink, dinner, just a walk.
And so you're going again?
Not happy?
Not happy.
You know, things, things got better in the new shore council, they use them. Yeah, I don't know, man, John. Matt's the one.
Yeah.
Matt, James. Yes.
And there's, is he full time or part time?
Part time.
And there's another part time person?
There's two full time, I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And are they still dealing with lawsuits from Baltimore?
Yeah.
There, it's still pending.
Yeah. Actually, Matt just already, in fact, with the talent division. One of the else. I don't, I don't think they're going to.
Just to that. I guess some nice talent. It's a verdict, verdict.
I'm not allowed to put it on camera right now, I'm trying to just walk in top.
Yeah. Say that, because there's no other strategy.
Yeah. Everybody has their hobby, because I suppose.
I'm all hobby.
I mean, that's what it is, I don't have that kind of money, so I don't know what I could do.
Just, what do you thought it's gonna be? It's never easy. Why not make it easy?
Yeah, we're just easy, but. Alrighty, okay. Thoughts, Mr. Mr. Annie?
So, I mean, my questions would be what is preventing, I'm, I guess I'm kind of mostly concerned with the that what's being added to the back of the existing taproom building, right?
Because of the retaining?
No, but just because of like, if, like, what is preventing, other than just maximizing the space, meeting the rear setback requirement for that? I understand the scenario in.
There's other buildings.
There's free positioning.
There's no space? That's why.
Not for the rear setback, that's a totally new, there's no reason, like, so the thing is, is why can't that just be 10 feet down the side of the building and just be, and there'd be.
Because that's where they need to put the addition, there's no way to put the addition on and meet that setback.
Or rear setback on the side.
The rear, the rear setback, is that, did I not say, did I say side setback?
You said, you're.
Rear, so this, so why can this new building not just be 10 feet farther towards Jensen Avenue? And then it would not need a variance?
The, because that's not where they, that's not where they need it. I've been down, I've been down there, I know, I know the reason, but. But the other thing too, you got to keep in mind, there's actually a strip of land that the city owns in front of their property in Jensen Avenue, that goes directly across the parking lot. So.
Yeah, but, but the structure does not go all the way to the end of the building.
You're right, it doesn't, I can tell you why, why we want to do it there. The reason being, there is a, a window that we would utilize as, can turn into a door that would allow us to take this section here and utilize it for outdoor seating. And the door is right here. This amount of space is perfect and just enough to fit two ADA bathrooms and a walking cooler to support the kitchen, which is back here. That would allow direct access from the kitchen, which we're proposing to do here, into the walking cooler. If the thing were to shift forward, that would just have to get reconfigured in a way that doesn't work with the floor plan building as it is. So that's the, the reason for this particular layout.
What do you think?
That's why I asked.
No, I knew that they, he had told me that, and that's why I knew that's where it needed to be on that corner, not at the front corner. Yeah, because it would defeat that purpose.
The only other scenario that we've considered that makes sense with respect to the current footprint or floor plan, let's say, of this building, would be to take instead of, because these are really two separate things, there's restrooms and then walking cooler, would be to take the walking cooler to the front, but that still puts it within the 10-foot setback.
Yeah, yeah.
Rear, and it's kind of moot, I think, really, from a variance point of view.
Yeah, yeah, because if you, once you built the property line, you don't need a side setback.
And not particularly a great aesthetic improvement.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with that at all, yeah. You know. Our jobs to ask the questions.
And you would use parking too, on the other side?
Probably we would lose maybe one spot.
Anything else?
I mean, as far as the building is concerned, I mean, I, this obviously makes sense based on the existing, you know, this, this is going to be built on the, the back of this is, is, is on the existing building, right?
Yeah, exactly, this back corner would change, it would just we would just continue closer to.
You are planning on raising that addition back.
Oh, I think it's beyond salvageable, yes, it's just.
That thing's bad shape.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The gentleman who inspected the property years ago said it's not sound, everyone knows how many years ago.
Yeah, so.
Infilling that area with a building isn't going to change.
No, I, I don't, I, I have no, I really don't have any arguments on that. Are we going to talk about the dumpster separately or, or pause one thing?
It's technically a separate application.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's mine.
So we're gonna do it separate?
It's not even a application.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, that's enough to me.
Mary?
Um, I'm, nothing, I just, my concern was the wall that they're gonna replace, try to replace that.
Yeah, let's talk about the wall for a second. So the, we spoke when I was down there, the retaining wall, as we know, is, is in bad condition.
Yes.
You know, it's built using old sidewalk, this is sidewalk material. And, you know, I don't know. All, all I know is, is that I wouldn't want to spend a lot of money putting a building right up against a structure that could potentially, in a, in a day lose, just kind of sliding down and wipe out my my, my new bathrooms. And so my understanding is, is that retaining wall belongs to the neighbor, it's on her property.
Yes.
And you've established that by way of the survey, right?
Yes, and in, when I was looking at the, in the records office in City Hall here, there's reference on this property to a building that was once there, and it clearly does look like.
Yeah, there's a foundation.
The foundation of a building that, that resided there. So it's our understanding that it's on her property, it's holding back that property and her land, and it needs to be rebuilt regardless of what we do. Because it's, it's endangering, I think, the backside of the existing building as a, as a, a contact.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially, potentially.
So here's the problem, it's, they there's a couple of problems, one is that you can't really do this. You can't really do this without them doing that.
Sure. And, um, and so you know, you have a, you have a potential issue here, even if you want to contribute uh, to the cost of doing it, and what are to her, her to do, it doesn't mean that she's going to do it.
Certainly not.
So, um, you know, I'm a little, I don't know about you guys, but I'm a little reluctant, you know, and I don't know whether, whether this is possible or not, but I think that we have to, we have the, the variance would have to be continued upon that wall being addressed.
Certainly.
And, and I would think.
Well, I mean, I, I feel like that's, that's more concerned of the building department issue and building department on what kind of structure and sound design, right?
Well.
But what, I mean, like, here's, we're just telling them that.
But with the billing department would have to go in and, you know, in order, they would have to condemn it and force the neighbor to do something about it.
Yeah, but I, I don't see how that, I mean, sure, that, what does that have to do with us as well?
Well, because, because, you know, do we wanna, do we wanna issue a variance that allows a building to be built up against, right up against an unsafe existing wall?
The wall doesn't get rebuilt before the structure goes up? You couldn't even get machines back there and fix the wall?
Right. Right. So it doesn't make sense. You know, that's why.
I think that property could be in a different condition.
Would you be able to build a wall in front of that? And that way you wouldn't have to.
Build your own retaining up. All right. We just get ahead to.
And I'll tell you why. Is because if you're, if you're relying on somebody else to rebuild something, it might not be up to the standard that's gonna hold that back for the next twenty, thirty years. I would feel more comfortable building it myself, knowing that, hey, that's not coming down on my property.
We have every intention of doing it ourselves.
Oh, so you're gonna redo that with the property owner?
Whether or not, uh. No, you can't. No, without the permission.
Well, without, yeah, right, definitely.
We certainly need her permission, but I, I think you're absolutely right. We would want to be, uh, in control of that rebuilding process before putting any additional square footage on the back of the building. Well, the other, the other alternative is, and I think this is what Eric Skidin had, is say, you know, not being reliant on what they are gonna do or not going to do with that wall, but just simply
Protect it.
Just simply pouring a bulkhead, you know, concrete bulkhead wall that, um, will protect and protect from that, from that, um, wall, um, sliding into your building in the, in the event it were to fail. I, I, I don't know, but it's just a concern. All of it's a concern, and then, you know, the, I don't know, I mean, I you don't have, you don't have any details worked out with the neighbor at this point, right? Not at this point, no. I'm sure that in the conversations we've had, I'm sure if I said to her, I am going to rebuild this wall and pay for it all, she would say yes. But she doesn't want to pay for it.
But this is many.
Oh, no, we've had, no, we've had a formal conversation.
I could vouch for Tate because she called me today.
I would, I would take that deal. You have a potential liability and somebody's gonna pay to fix it? I would, I would take that deal, but that doesn't mean she has to. No, she certainly doesn't have to, but if she weren't, I would think we have a case to take her or enforce her to do it herself. Because it's endangering our building as it is.
You have erosion, you have.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
That's right. Issues, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's a dowdy wall.
Yeah.
If the property owner starts to do your own wall, Eric. And that starts to come down.
Either way, I would like to work with her and, uh, and do something that, that works for both of us. Yeah, I think the best thing to do is to cooperate with one another.
Oh, definitely.
Donna, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I think something should be done, and the neighbor definitely has to be incorporated into that. You know, because I, I'm looking just at an online picture of the property, I see the stone wall. And, um, you know, it would behoove him to do something on his side to protect himself un, unless you fix her wall first.
And see kids. Yeah, I was gonna say, there's, there's no harm in issuing, you know, our approval of variance, so during our preset, we would look at something like that. Um, if she wasn't willing to fix the wall, it might require violations for it to get, to get her to move on, if it's forever, you know, the structure or stuff. It, it, it's something we look at during the process.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to say, is that's all building permits stuff that are, that are. Okay, he's considering something that could damage the wall by getting a variance. Like the wall is already there, and that's, that's an area problem, that's, they, they, yeah, they gotta work that out, but that would, I would do it best.
And all right, is there anybody online or anybody here that wants to speak to this application? Do you guys want to speak to this application?
You should, what do you know, someone? I can say here.
Yeah, name and address.
Andrea Short.
We know this person.
Three five Hasbrook Avenue, so I got the notice on Saturday that the variances were being asked. Um, unfortunately, I'm working a lot, so I'm not gonna have to do too much, a lot has been answered. Um, through my partner, getting some work, because we just saw the two variances of dumpster and of course this, um, trying to find maps of our, our property and kind of understand this a better, I, I think I kind of understand it a little bit more. I know the two people that live next to me, one of the courses, one of the wall, are those rental properties, so um, you know, I just also kind of wanted to be here to represent them unofficially, um, the renters, and these will of course have them too. Um, to me, yeah, we were just kind of nervous about looking at some of the maps, it seems like it's already right to our property line.
Yeah, it's, the building goes right zero, almost zero to the property line. And, hey, your, your, um, yeah, it's on the, but way below, down below from where your, where your yard grade is.
Right.
Um, they, I, I wouldn't think that it would have, um, that what they're proposing would have too much impact on, on anything, you know, having to do with your property per se.
Right, so because it's already a bloody, our property, it can. So very nervous about it approaching onto our property by having, you know, variance.
Certainly, if we're not going any further, closer to your property, in fact, it's going, uh, can I show you that?
Yeah, that would be crazy.
So here is, um, this is our building and the property line, this is you right here. Um, what we're proposing to do is, I'm flipping sober, is this, we're about to add in this direction, but along the same uh, footprint, uh, or, I would say, by the, from, but it already exists.
Right.
But moving it closer to this property, not any closer to yours.
Uh huh.
Is that, is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, it just wasn't clear, obviously, in the notice, that we just want to make sure that we.
No, it wasn't clear down here either when I saw it, so I think I'm down there and say. Yeah, so no, we would not come any further in this direction at all.
So is this being, I, this is probably more of a planning, you know, say question, but are you rebuilding this or you're just adding?
Adding just this little section here, this already is the building exists as it is. So no, we wouldn't go any further in this direction, just proposing to go add in this direction.
Oh, yeah, so we just couldn't get our, sort of, you know, we didn't have time, I already had time to get our map to figure out where the line was and how that would.
Sure.
Effect, so.
Yeah.
We just wanted to be here. I don't know if you wanted to say something.
Give me three minutes. Edward Norman, three fifty-five Hasbrook Avenue. So, as you said, when we got the notification Saturday, uh, I kind of reached out to some people, and we haven't been able to locate a map for our property. I don't know if it's been surveyed on your side. I, I can't produce a map from our side, so I was reaching out to a couple of local surveyors to see if they have anything, but I have not gotten anything. I have not got, been, had the chance to go to the county building to see if there's a map on file there. I'm just concerned about a possibility of easement that might through, might run through that property for utilities that, because I believe at one time that property, like all the others on Jansen, went from Hasbrook back to Jansen, much like the property you're ordered with the wall. At some point, that church might have had a parking lot where your building is. There's a chance there could be some utilities under there. So my concern is, without actually doing the investigation to see where things go.
Yeah.
Uh, it could turn into a bigger problem.
So the survey that he had done doesn't show any utility easements on his property? And that boundary should be your property boundary, being that that on that one.
But they can totally still be there, we just need.
It just was a little marked up. On, on your property, there could be.
There wouldn't, they would show even if it wasn't, there wasn't a recorded.
But if it's in the deed, it would be in the survey.
Right, exactly.
No, I'm nervous, I'm nervous that we have utilities and there isn't a reported easement. That's, that's what.
Right, because if that could have been, who knows how it passed hands back in nineteen twenty-eight, you know? So there is, I have no evidence of yes or no. Well, the water department would know. Well, I know by water comes in the front, I'm not a hundred percent sure where the sewer is. So.
So we can just try to figure that out.
What about the sewer department would name that? I am the sewer department.
Yeah, yeah.
So just, so, uh.
He works in the city.
Yes.
Does it have a park avenue?
Well, if anyone has noticed, in the city of Kingston, there are a lot of things that don't make sense.
Oh, very true.
Very true.
Yes.
So until I get something that I can see on paper and vision, and actually do an inspection via camera, diet test, other, I would like more than four days to make a decision. So I don't know if you want to do like a sidebar conversation about that?
Um, I, just as a, I, I.
So are you asking us, are you asking us to, uh, postpone this decision?
I'm asking to check the possibility of tabling it, or, or just have a, a gentleman's agreement right now, on record that.
The only thing is, that's a site plan approval, that's where that's really.
Yeah.
Appropriately redressed in my, I can't prove the site one because there is a utility over there, obviously can't build on top of it. But that seems to be where, whether the, like, obviously, if, if the easement were denied, then it wouldn't be an issue because you wouldn't be allowed to build there anyways, but if the easement is approved, it doesn't necessarily mean that he's gonna build that something I would then be addressed during the site plan.
And I know there are many properties in the city of Kingston that have their utilities running through other people's properties.
Yes.
Unbeknownst to them.
Yeah.
And then it all comes to a head. Somebody sees something or somebody's digging.
Or somebody digs, uh, and thinks that the sewer line or the water line.
Nine times out of ten, if that sewer line were there prior to the other building being built, it's kind of grandfathered. So I, I don't want to get to that point where it's water.
Where's the waste line in the church?
It's in the rear.
Well.
So.
That's.
That's why I wanted to investigate, because this is something that, and then because of that, I just recently found that. When we got that letter, when I started looking around, and I just had some landscaping done, there was a bunch of bushes removed, and then low and behold, there's a clean out for a sewer line. So I don't know if there's a potential of a tank being there with its own set little drain field area for the church itself, or if that had continued down to Jansen. When that might have been all one property at one time, continued.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So that's my concern, and, you know, initially.
So we could go ahead and make a decision on this, and then you could follow up that concern at the planning board level to, um, I, you know, make sure that they're, that they know that. I, yeah, I would send, uh, you know, something, letter to Sue and say, this is a potential concern, and I'm gonna investigate. I don't know, when, when are you next on to the planning board?
Uh, next month, it would be, I don't know the date of that meeting.
It's usually the third Monday of the month, but you're not on this month?
No, that's.
This still won't be till July. So it won't be till July, um, but that I would definitely say this.
June, right, June, yes.
And do you, do you, and, and do you have, you don't know, you don't have the survey, you don't even go to find the survey. I'm not surprised that you don't have the survey. Church, probably didn't have the survey, I, I don't remember.
Yeah, I'm the survey, yeah.
I was, it was state agent, by the way. Who listed that, that for sale.
But I don't understand is how can something be sold without having an accurate map for the sewer water?
Utilities. Oh, that's done, it's done all the time. It's done all the time.
In this, in this day and age.
Yeah, no. Absolutely, done, done all the time.
Well, I mean, it's my easement, there is an easement that we don't actually, there isn't, or you chose your writing, we don't have an easement, if the construction is not going to
affect.
As it says, then it also doesn't matter, since I know, we all just want to be good neighbors, we just don't want an issue.
But it eventually won't matter if for some reason your sewer line runs through the parking lot out to Jansen, and that's the connection where it is. If something breaks, you're gonna have to dig up that parking lot.
It, it can also, it could run right underneath that existing building, that could.
Yeah.
That's what my thought is, it's maybe either, either in that alleyway between the back of the building and that song wall, or actually that building with the bill over top that years ago.
And if that hole, if it's a way line, that's definitely found.
You're, I'd never have a problem.
Right.
Oh, the tree, surrounding the interior?
Never had a problem. Yes.
It's, we just wanted to make sure that this wasn't going to approach, and then it did open up this other potential issue, so, you know, I know this isn't a practical problem with you and the planning board, just to make sure that nobody is gonna have to.
Given where this.
Have no bathroom or no parking lot.
Given.
Both scenarios.
Exactly.
Given where this is and how small it is, the, um, the likely to look, unless of course, that's where they, that's where they put the sewer line in that alley.
So when, I mean, if you're frost walls, your feet, that's probably the elevation for that small length.
Yeah, all right, well, so, um, I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and roll on the, on the, um, on the, um.
Air advance.
Air advance, thank you, that, that was very helpful. And, um, you wanna, you wanna follow up, um, with the planning board on this particular issue? Now, but you want to reach out to her as well. And you know what, it might not, this might be the impetus for you guys to get a survey. Possible.
I've reached out.
It won't be, it, it, it shouldn't be too bad, um, for a property that size. I mean, it's basically mostly the building and the side yard.
It's, it's our research, though, it's, it costs money.
Yeah, I'm, I just know what, I just know what, you know, I, I, I wouldn't expect it to be that expensive, it's not that big a piece of property. And it's, um, it's.
The survey's not, the, the cost, I'm worried about.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
No, and they're not, and they, they'll only tell you where things are based on what's in the deed. If the deed describes a right of way or a sewer easement or a utility easement, that's where they'll get that, they don't actually physically locate these things.
Right, unless they're marked out, you know, like.
Well, all we're, we're actually recording the deed.
Yeah.
Hello. I'm just saying, you know, they usually use a subject clause in your deed that says you're subject to all rights of way easements and other accountrances of record. So if it's in your, if that is in your deed, then you can probably search in the clerk's office for any easements of record on that property if they're, if they've been recorded.
Given the deed, it could be, be a bad idea, if it might mention, uh, utility easements.
Yeah, you might even want to talk to a title company. Have them do that.
Well, if that's the case, then it's near a possible, unless you actually get utility companies to come out and locate their lines.
We just, I mean, we'll go through the, look through the county maps, figure out, we just haven't had the opportunity to.
Okay.
Um. And you know, the utilia, it's, you know, asking what's in the, yeah, for the owner.
It's like bringing work to a home.
The property owner's responsible from the home to the.
To the, yeah, yeah.
It's all on us.
Somewhere I heard that recently.
Yeah, you know. Somebody would, would leave me down here.
Before I die, if I can get that changed, I would love to get that changed.
Yes, it would.
Because that was, that was a real hustle on the part of the municipalities to make them owners responsible for that. Is there anybody online that wants to speak to this app? No, nobody's online? Okay, do I, um? Okay, do I, um, hear a motion to either approve or disapprove this?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, and do we have a second?
No, I'll second.
Donna? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so you have your variance. Um, I ask only that you, you follow up with them and, you know, um, and the planning board and just make sure we, you know, sort of follow, pull on that thread and follow it home and see, make sure that if there is stuff going, that would be great. Um.
Can I shoot you one quick favor?
Yeah.
So fortunately, I forgot the regulations. Can you just make a tally and then I?
Yep, I did already, I wrote it down.
Write down the, the findings and I will get them typed up for you and meet you tomorrow with signatures.
Okay, great. Awesome. Um, all right, thanks, Kate. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No, there, there's no application for it. I didn't see an application for a dumpster.
There is.
In there.
Uh, okay, I never saw that.
Well, I got a dumpster here for you.
Okay, great. Ooh.
So the, the.
Great.
The dumpster.
So the dumpsters are just moving out of that enclosure to where I see them here on the map, right? Cinder block enclosure.
That, that was the question I'm gonna ask is what is, what is the enclosure of?
It's a cinder block enclosure?
Probably, just like the one that came across the street or something along those lines.
So.
I mean, it's funny, it's funny, you're ruined for it.
Well, I guess my question is, if, if the planning board says that a molder is okay, why do we need a?
Cause there's a zoning code that says dumpsters can't go in the front. And it's. In the, uh, front of the book, if you look under in the, uh, we put the offering index there, uh, it'll say dumpster.
Yeah, I mean, I may, maybe it's just, I guess. What, where's the application for that?
You can look at the menu, beginning of the zoning book here. It shows you where each.
Does that, I, I didn't.
Is that the thing that Tony typed up for us? Is that what you're talking about?
That's the zoning book.
Is it, but it can't be in front of the building or that it can't be visible from the street?
Yeah, from the street.
But that's, that's, that's how, that's the part I, I, I said, but if they're, but if.
They're internet.
It's.
The enclosure could.
It's, it's approved, it's a top zone. Guess that's how using works. Did they approve it?
They told me to apply for a variance.
They?
For the enclosure.
Correct.
So it's not, so it's not, it's the enclosure.
Where's the code on this? What's, what's the?
It's four, yeah, forty-two dash forty-two.
Dash twenty-two?
Yeah. Yeah, it says all dumpsters shall have a permit from the body of the church and shall be located so to be out of view from the street or adjoining residential property.
That's correct.
But, I, uh, I mean, tell me how this board has ruled before on this because I feel like if it's in an enclosure, then it's not a dumpster.
Ever since I've been here, we have never ruled on this issue. So I gotta tell you.
Okay.
Never had dumpster court before.
I. Can we, so can we just, let's just, let's just deal with the reality that they needed, uh, uh, they, they needed a variance and it's in an enclosure and it's not gonna be visible.
Well, here's the thing is that you can make that a condition if you pass the variance so that it's conditioned that it must be enclosed.
Whether it's proposed to be enclosed, so I don't.
Yeah, so let me just put that in. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm totally fine with that. I definitely, it puts us back in the beginning where we shouldn't have ever been to begin with.
Well, not according to the way this code's written. It needs to permit and can't be in the front in, in sight. And I, and I'm assuming that means the enclosure too.
Well, yeah, cause that, that's what they're, that's their interpretation, so.
So can we, does somebody wanna make a motion to approve this?
I'll move to approve.
Or is it not approved?
And well, we're gonna check, is, is there anybody who'd comment on this in public?
Oh, yeah.
There was nobody else before. Why did they just show up? Did they just show up for the, um?
The search assessment, so they stare back, you know?
Yes.
Does it stay separate? So there should be public speaking office separate.
Yeah, no, I, I mean.
We also looked at P's man, so.
If it's enclosed, I think that's fine and I agree to all the things. It's kind of stepping out of line, I mean, you know. But, I mean, it probably is just, just saying it's gonna be enclosed and I, I press the tape, but it's probably good to have it classified because not everybody is.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
No, no, it, it's getting improved, you know, provided it hasn't.
Yeah, so I was just saying, as long as, you know, this doesn't affect us exactly.
So initially, this is how we became this much. Initially, why I came here and why I reached out because we had, for whatever reason, wanted to come and go on behind our property or against our property. Okay, currently, we do get some smells. We have to, you know, some flexible windows from smells that were emanating from the establishment, from all the oyster shells that were piled this side of the building.
That you're not wrong.
That I got, which I see a take picture, um, which were attracting vermin, raccoons, this, that, the other thing. So this has been an ongoing thing for a couple of years now. Uh, I just wanted that to be understood. Uh, being it's going to be moved over, I don't think there's really too much of an issue. There has been some certain noise issues from amplified music after hours.
That's news to me.
That are, um, you know, beyond the city's noise ordinance.
Really?
Occasionally, so I just, but I'm, I'm good with all that and I won't have to change a dumpster position. I don't have any other thing. I'd rather focus on the other issue.
Yeah, and I have no problem. Enclosed doesn't matter where they live.
So.
I just wanna make sure.
That's what I was trying to do.
Well, gotta make sure that.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. I, I get it. I get it. I think, um, I thought the dumpster thing was on another agenda. I didn't know it was on this agenda.
Yeah, oh, no, yeah.
Yes, so, um, my bad, because when I went down there, there was no mention of dumpsters.
I'll make a motion to approve the dumpster variance, um, with the stipulation that it is enclosed and not visible from the street or the neighborhood of the property.
No, seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anthony was, made the motion and was the first and Mary was the second. Um, awesome.
You know, it's important.
Yep. Okay, um. All right, um, Mr. Cowan.
Here. Unless you wanna stay around for a second, you guys can go.
What's that?
Unless they want to stay around for the.
Is this everything? This isn't, this is entertaining.
I mean, you're welcome to stay.
We don't charge for the entertainment.
We should.
Good luck.
Touch base after Tuesday.
Yes.
Good to see you always, yeah. Yeah, do that. Sounds good.
Sure.
And good to see you, sir. You guys take a good night.
Okay, Shanti? Yeah, you wanna, uh, share with us what you're proposing here?
Yes. So, for this is a, for business that I own with my wife, can we call, co-work in Kingston? It's a shared office environment, like a week work. And we have been to one and, um, it is on the second floor of our, our front street, up in Center Garage. Completely separate operating business in Center Garage. As we have, is, uh, we offer desks, lounges, kitchen and all those sharing services. Um, and we have currently, um, number of members that pay monthly fee to be members of the coworking. But we do have more capacity to have more tenants. Well, what happened during COVID, we were shut down to, and had to start from scratch. Because, uh, we have the state's regulations, um, so we, we in two thousand, late two thousand, twenty, really, two thousand twenty-one, we had to start from zero and we're making progress and we are any members, but we still have a ways to go. To yet, uh, have our new capacity. So foot traffic in Uptown is an important driver of people to us. So we want to put essentially an ad on the side of our building to give people a sense of what is inside, what it looks like. So that's why there's a photograph, um, in my, yeah, just, uh, representative photos of what the interior looks like.
So it's, it's basically a sign?
It's a sign, to, to add as a sign and, and, uh, you know, I intended it to be there for a few months, but the code stipulates that, um, anything, um.
Temporary.
Yeah, that that would be considered permanent. If it's more than thirty days, it's permanent.
Yes, if it's more than thirty, if it's proposed to be more than thirty days, it's gonna be permanent. There's certain specs that it has to follow. It can be banner material. We went through this with the, uh, with the theater in Uptown. Was just, they just put these gigantic banners up and planned on leaving them there as permanent.
Right.
And, and so, um, yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with, uh, with temporary signage or even maybe providing some sort of a variance.
There's two variances here, all on one page.
And then this would also have to go to the HL.
They already, they already passed on it, right? They already, they already ruled on it, yeah.
They put it, any dynamics?
My, my only concern with this is, is that it's, doesn't sound like it's a temporary sign. It sounds like a sign that there's always going to be signs there. So.
Some type of sign.
That is not our intention.
No, it isn't?
It is not.
Okay, it seemed like that was.
No, no, because they're not made of, they're gonna be using chloroplast, which is a, uh, sort of a plastic.
I mean, you know.
And, uh.
Plastic cardboard.
No, if we're gonna do something permanent, we would do something nice and, and weather proven, long lasting.
Yeah, but what I mean by permanent is, is that there's going to be temporary signs.
Rotating?
Rotating and that creates, in my opinion, a permanent sign.
Okay, so that is not our intention. Our intention, what we did it is only to do this for three months.
And three months a year?
That's, I think that's, that's fair. Yes, I mean, we're only thinking about this year. We're not thinking about next year, but I think that's a fair comment.
Well, once you have a variance.
Yeah.
The variance continues.
Okay.
So whatever we're gonna give you a variance for, if we're gonna give you a variance, will be something that runs with your property. Um, and so.
Imagine anytime he puts up a new sign, he's gonna have to go to the HLPC to see if it's of importance with, you know, the store.
I don't know whether that's the case.
Any kind of exterior changes to, it's gonna have to be approved by them. So anytime we're gonna use a sign, so.
Well, that's fine, that's fine. I mean, the size of.
But that doesn't involve us at all.
Okay, my, my, um, my, I guess my, my, my issue here is, is that if we're doing an expansion for a temporary sign from one, from thirty days to ninety days, you know, if that's what we're doing and that we're doing that just, you know, on an annual basis, then that's the variance we're issuing. And that's the variance you're looking for.
We're still, I'm considering, um.
Yeah, they'll still have to anytime you change it.
Yeah, well, that's between them and.
I used theoretically, if you just put the same exact, like, you just print the same thing theoretically, wouldn't necessarily have to go down. But if you put up different.
A map, you could, could if you want, one sign on each wall.
Yeah.
Two signs.
Yeah.
And extending the time.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so just to be clear on how this, the, cause we ran into this with, um, uh.
Yes.
CDW as well, um, the. If we approve, if, if we specifically write the variance to say that the, the variance to the time of a temporary sign is ninety days, then any, any temporary sign that, as long as it was approved by HLPC, this site would always have a probability of ninety days for a temporary sign.
For you.
For you, yeah, yeah. So that's, I just wanna make sure that, um, that I'm clear in understanding that and that we're all.
That's what I just went through. That's how I, so if somebody wants to make a motion to either approve or deny what you just said.
Yeah.
I'd be entertaining that.
I will move to approve what Tony just said.
Anthony, you wanna repeat that?
So, uh.
Cause it's what I wanted.
So it, so there's, so there are two things. Are we making two, are we making two promotions or is one?
One second, before we, before we do this, um, is there anybody that wants to speak to this application? Uh, there's nobody on over here. And there's nobody here. Do you wanna speak to this? I get in trouble when someone. Um, pay attention. Okay, so again, motion.
Uh, I, Matt, are, are we, we making two motions for the two different things or one? Yeah, I think you can just make the one motion. You're allowing for two signs to be.
Right.
So I made.
True, two.
I made a motion to.
Five foot by five foot.
Oh, you made the motion.
You've got to second it here.
Okay, I'll second it.
And you may have to rewrite him what you said.
Okay. Um, so the motion is to approve two signs by a foot by five foot. Just specifically five foot by five foot.
Right.
Um, but the size didn't need it, right?
Nope.
Yeah.
Nobody specified.
No, we are.
So you only want.
That's what they asked for.
All right, I'm fine with that. Sure.
I, I don't, uh, I don't want it to all of a sudden be four by eight, four by eight, you know, so let's, let's, let's be specific.
Okay, sure. So, uh, two, uh, variance from one sign to two signs and the time limit from thirty days to ninety days.
Per year.
Per year.
Okay. Alright, and do I have a second for that?
I guess I am the second, Mary.
I just said, I, I, I.
Mary, we.
You know, if you guys could make it a little easier.
Brian, why?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You're good.
Thank you.
You're good, we'll get a while sometime to get there.
Especially with us.
Thank you.
We'll throw down, get you better.
This was funny.
Do you, do you know anybody that still has any of these signs? I have. Anybody who knows the sign, please, now, I found this sign is crazy. Oh, are we not, can we close, close, we're not closing both?
Yes, can I have a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Adjourned.
I will.
We all second.
We all second.
Has everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I found this inside wall perch.
Oh, cool.